Good evening, everyone. Go ahead and call the City Council meeting for March 15, 2010 to order. First thing as always on the agenda is the roll call and determination of the quorum. Amber, if you would, please.
Wah. Martenson. Quaker. Costello.
Here.
La Croix.
Here.
Chapman. Olson. Weifenbach. Kroger.
Here.
Hancock. We have a quorum.
Very good. Just a couple of reminders. If you have a cellphone or pager, we'd appreciate it if you put it in the vibrate or the silent mode. Certainly appreciate that. Also, if you wish to speak on any item tonight on the agenda, we do have speaker request forms. They're to your left, our right, over on the media table. If you please fill those out, turn those into Amber at the end of the diocer, and she'll get those down to us. That way, as we make our way down the agenda, we'll make sure we do not overlook you. Also, for those of you that read it in the paper, not only do we have our audience viewers, but tonight is our first attempt at streaming video on the Internet. So for those that are joining us via the Internet, we welcome you. Hope everything works according to plan. With that, we have our invocation. I will ask Pastor Jim Sorum from the Bethel Assembly of God Church to please lead us. So if you please rise and then remain standing, we'll go directly to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. God, my heart is filled with thankfulness tonight, and just being in this room where there's people in here that's willing to serve and people that have been elected by this community and our freedom to elect people. And, God, it's just good to have government like this and people like this. And also, God, we humbly come before you tonight, knowing that our wisdom is never enough and our abilities fall short and our sense of justice sometimes lacks all that it could be. So that's why we're calling you tonight, to fill this room with your wisdom, with your insights, sometimes with your patience and your grace. But, God, overall, we want, in this room tonight, that your ways would come forth, that your justice would come forth. And, God, I just ask you to bless each of these councilmen, each of these city leaders, and all that is here tonight, may we be in a spirit that just reflects you tonight, in your name. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Pastor. Next thing on the agenda, as always, is the adoption of the agenda. Any items need to be added to the agenda? Please turn on your light. I do have a note here that we do need to remove item number 86 from the agenda. It was placed on the agenda in error, so we will be removing item number 86. Any additional items to be placed on the agenda? Please turn on your light. Any additional? Seeing none, the chair will look for a motion to approve the agenda as posted with removal of item number 86, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Now we're on to the approval of the minutes for the February 22, 2010 special council meeting and the March 1, 2010 regular council meeting. Chair, like a motion for approval, please.
Still move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to awards and recognitions. Typically, at this meeting, we have a Veteran of the Month award. Unfortunately, our veteran this month has some family that has some health issues. He is unable to join us, so we will catch him the next meeting. We do have three special employee awards, and I'll ask the chief to come forward, and we're going to recognize three of our police officers. Nope, there we go. Very good. Well, it's always a pleasure to recognize long-term employees that have served the City of Rapid City so well over the years, and tonight is no exception. We actually have three from Rapid City Police Department tonight. The first one is David Stratton. Come on up, Dave. He has worked for the City of Rapid City and the Rapid City Police Department for 25 years. With that, I'm allow the chief to stand up and just give us a few anecdotes of Dave's 25-year career at the PD.
Great. Well, I remember when I was just a boy. Lieutenant Dave Stratton has been there 25 years with our department, but what a lot of people don't know is that he has a total number of years of service in law enforcement of 37?
36.
36 years. Before he came to us, he worked for Aberdeen and also for SDSU Police Department. So he's came to us, plenty of experience. He's been here 25 years and now lieutenant, so he commands a shift of police officers in our department. So very proud to honor him tonight. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Where's Larry? You want to get Larry?
There.
There's Larry. There again, it's a true pleasure to recognize another long-term employee of the Rapid City Police Department. I think I've known Larry for 20-some years. And I'll tell you what, he is an outstanding officer. And there again, I'm going to ask the chief to come in and give us, how do we want to say, some tales of the trail about Mr. Rose.
Well, Larry Rose is a very dedicated employee of the department, has been with us for 20 years. Recently, in the last year or so, has had to retire due to a nagging back problem, but so valuable, he came back, and now he's a compliance officer for our department, which means he does all of the fingerprint-based background checks for our department, for licensing and for city employees and so on. He's a whiz at everything he touches. His handwriting looks like a typewriter. He's perfectionist in every way, and he's also been a firearms instructor for just about as long as he's worked here. So very proud to have Larry work for us and celebrate 20 years. Congratulations.
We also get to recognize Dale Hatson-Buehler. I tell you, there again, I've known him for, geez, 15 years, I think. There again, another dedicated police officer with the Rapid City Police Department, and he is celebrating 20 years with the City of Rapid City. With that, chief, there again, fill us in on some of his exploits.
Well, he might not appreciate that totally, but Dale is a good example of the type of police officer we look for in the department. We have a diverse group, people from all kinds of backgrounds. Dale happens to be a former meat cutter for Safeway. Comes in handy when we're buying steaks for the department, picknicks and so on. He knows which ones to pick. He's been a traffic officer for a number of years. In fact, some of you in the audience might have met up with him now and then, but he's a good police officer. He's been with us a long time. Very proud to have him on the department. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone. That was somewhat unusual. I've never known our police officers to be shy before. Okay, next thing on the agenda, as always, is the public comment period. This is the time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by the unanimous vote of the council members present. I do not have any speaker request forms that indicate a general public comment period or item. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any issue not on the agenda tonight? If not, we will move on. We are on to the non-public hearing items. These are items 3 through 80 inclusive. 3 through 80 inclusive. Chair, look for motion to open the public comment period on items 3 through 52 inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I do not have any, whoops, I take that back. I have one speaker request form on item number 36 from Mr. Don Perdue. Now, Mr. Perdue did approach me prior to the meeting, and he did request of the council, and I told him, was that their discretion, that he would like five minutes, not three minutes? Council rule is for three minutes, so if there's any... Okay, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
I'll move to allow for five minutes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Now, just so we know, this will be five minutes for this comment period, so anyone else who wishes to speak will also be given that opportunity. Do we add a second? Okay. All those in favor, let's talk about this. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes with one no. So, Mr. Perdue, you'll have five minutes, so the floor is yours, sir. If you please identify yourself for the record.
Don Perdue, and I thank you for the five minutes. I might not need it, but anyway, I can talk slower. But I want to bring, you all have a piece of, a little packet of, I put on your desk there, and we're, it is about the bid and the Plaza. And that is the copy. Ron, you seem... Okay, I'm sorry. So anyway, I received this kind of a summary of the bid and the Main Street Square. And it's beautifully written, and I want to thank the people who spent a lot of time that they had spent in researching this and putting it all together. And I'd like to just draw your lines through the first page, where in fact, in the first paragraph, is a professionally managed space. That's what we're looking for. They promised us that. Remember, these other things are promising us, that's what we're buying. It's professionally managed, again, down in the fourth paragraph, in daytime and evenings. And so consequently, we want to remember what we're buying. We're buying a totally well-managed, commercially managed entity for our downtown Rapid City. Now, I'm 100% behind the bid, because in fact, I think it's remarkable that a group of citizens, especially landlords, can get together and tax themselves, surtax themselves for a soft interest collectively and sometimes singularly. It's remarkable that they did that, and I think my hat's off to them, and I'd be glad to participate in that. But I do have a problem with the idea that it's a committed fund. It's strictly to subsidize the Plaza. And I don't see a whole bunch of economic growth in that, that we're taxing ourselves to have new monies to do various different things that we should do downtown, that we, as landlords, feel that we would like to participate in. But anyway, that is a small part of it. You get to the budget, a two-year budget, which in fact, the association supplied us with. And you notice that we have a manager, a full-time manager, for $40,000. Remember, professionally well-run facility, 365 days, and we're paying some guy $40,000 to do this. Not in your lifetime. I plug in $65,000, just to be polite. It can be between 65 and 85 with all the overhead and everything else, workman's comp, the unemployment, Social Security, and healthcare. So anyway, if you just run that down, and I want to go through them all, administration assistant, they have for $15,000. I can't get anybody to sweep my floor in a factory for $15,000, more or less manage something. And as it goes on down, and so adding those up as you all have, I don't have to do all this. And so it goes from $34,000, excuse me, it goes up to $284,000 on the light side of labor. Light side. This is not a heavy side, believe me. I don't think you even get it done for this figure. But as we go on down the whole thing, and of course, we don't have a utility estimate yet, I do believe we're going to take some water for a pool, an ice rink, and some electricity to make ice out of water. I suspect that's going to be rather significant. Mayor?
I was going to say, your five minutes is up-down, but I'll give you just a little bit more latitude.
Oh, my apologies. Oh, my God, I am a slow talker. But anyway, as it comes right down to it, what I come down to it is $268,000 is in fact, a yearly expense for operations, and you take $174,000 of the total bid out, you're still looking at $194,000. Now, I know on the other side, on the revenue side, which is ambiguous as heck, I cannot really accept anything of that, except $40,000 for the ice skating privilege and the skates. So I'm just very, very concerned. I want the council to think very seriously, and what I'm asking for, and I asked before each and every one of you, I ask for three months' moratorium on this, so in fact, we can get our horses all lined up and get some good solid numbers without emotions to see what that's going to cost. I do not want to see this become another journey museum. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I do not have any additional speaker request forms on items 3 through 52 inclusive. Does anyone else wish to speak on items 3 through 52 inclusive? Not? The chair will look for a motion to close the public comment period on items 3 through 52 inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is made up of items 3 through 44 inclusive. 3 through 44 inclusive. Does anyone wish to remove any item on the consent calendar, 3 through 44 inclusive? Please turn on your light. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker. Item number six. Thank you. Any additional items? Any additional items? If not, the chair, whoops, let's go to Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
Item number 10.
Item number 10. Thank you. Any additional items? If not, the chair will look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, item 3 through 44 inclusive, with the exception of items 6 and 10, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to item number six, which is under the Public Works Committee, and this would be Alderman Aaron Costello. If you please read that in, please.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Item number six is authorize staff to work with the appropriate entities to develop an RFI for the Google Fiber Project, and I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to state that in looking into this over the last several days, my employer's parent company is part-owner of SDN Communications, which also provides high-speed data services across the state. With the stimulus funding that's come down, SDN will also likely be providing services to Rapid City. And so although there are several degrees of separation from my position to this, it is best that I avoid all appearance of conflict and abstain from the discussion.
Very good. We'll so note that. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes with Alderman Quaker abstaining. Item number 10, please.
Item number 10 is authorize staff to advertise for bids for the yard waste site improvement West Boulevard North, estimated to cost $60,000. I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? There we go. Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I don't have a problem with this. I just wanted to see where our site was on Fairmont. Two years ago, we talked about that, and I thought that was slated before anything else, when we brought up the site over in West Rapid, that the site in South Rapid would be the next on the list.
Let's go to Robert Ellis, Public Works Director.
We have two sites, actually, three sites in town. The Fitzgerald was improved a couple of years ago, and we were trying to make improvements to the North Rapid site and also the Fairmont site. Late 2009, Rod Johnson, one of our project engineers, tried to put together an estimate for improving both of those sites. The one before you today, the West Boulevard, was a $60,000 project that we felt we could fit within the 2010 budget. And the Fairmont side, I believe, was in the range of $200,000 to $300,000 to do that site, and we simply don't have enough money to do that in the 2010 budget. We are looking to put that in the 2011 budget, though. Turned out to be a much bigger project than we anticipated due to the soils that are moving around over there. It's going to take quite a bit of concrete replacement to make that site, to make those site improvements.
Okay, Mr. Weifenbach, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval. We're dealing with item number 10. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar. We are on to the continued consent calendar. These are items 45 through 52. 45 through 52. We'll turn to Bob Dominic. Do we need to have any of those pulled? How about from anyone on the council? Okay. We are dealing with items 45 through 52. If not, the chair will look for a motion to approve the continued consent calendar, items 45 through 52, per the recommendations as posted. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the end of the continued consent items. We're on to the non-consent items, items 53 through 80. Chair will look for a motion to open the public comment period on items 53 through 80 inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We do have a speaker request form on item number 56. Russ Jobman, Hill City, talking, let's see, item 56. Russ, if you come forward, identify yourself. I'm so used to calling you Mr. Mount Rushmore, but you identify yourself for the record, and then the floor is yours, sir.
My name is Russ Jobman. I reside outside of Hill City, not actually Hill City. My address is 652 Old Hill City Road. I am the chairman of the CVB Board, and I want to speak out in favor of the item number 56 for you. I think it is an item that is very necessary for Rapid City, and as speaking for the CVB, we feel that, speaking the board feels, that the area down on Main Street would be an excellent area for it, and that we hope that you will step up to the plate and approve this motion.
Thank you. Russ, just for clarification, you had written down item number 56.
I'm sorry.
You're talking about 59? Okay, very good. It wasn't that late in the evening. I didn't think I was confused that early.
I was.
Okay, very good. Let's see. We also have a speaker request form from Don Perdue on item number 59. Don, did you wish to speak again?
Can I postpone that a minute?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to have somebody else speak first.
Sure. We'll put you down towards the bottom. Let's see. We also have a speaker request form from Charles Ray, item number 59. Hey, Mr. Ray, if you just please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours, sir.
Charles Ray, 703 Quincy. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and thank you for your dedicated service to this city, all of you. We have here 154 signatures of property owners, businesses, and tenants directly affected by this proposed tax. This tax seems unfair, because a significant number of citizens paying the tax do not believe they will benefit at all. Unlike the hotel bid tax, which is a tax by hotel owners for hotel owners, this tax is being proposed by downtown businesses for downtown businesses, but paid for by a significant number of taxpayers who will not benefit. We believe that we could have procured many more signatures, but it requires that we take time out from our businesses to muster opposition to this tax. Destination Rapid City is organized and currently receives $100,000 a year from the city. This should be enough to promote downtown. In fact, I have never seen downtown more vital than it is right now, and I've lived here over 60 years. The world economy is in a guarded position. The state of South Dakota is being forced to make budget cuts. Taxes in the city may need to be increased in the future to cover rising costs of utilities and fuel. This is not the time to add another tax on a select few property owners who are already overtaxed. Please consider, when you vote on this proposal, how your constituents would vote on this extra tax. We who are opposed do not believe the citizenry would approve. Please do not approve this measure. Please do not approve this measure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like these signatures?
If you'd like to pass them to Amber, and we can make sure the Council gets copies of all those. And Amber, if you want to go and pass those down, and then we'll make sure that we get copies for everyone. We'll go back to Mr. Don Perdue.
I only need three minutes. Anyway, like I said earlier, I'm a hundred percent behind the did, and I think it's a remarkable thing that people can get together, blah, 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 and tax themselves for the common good of their interests. Now, so, all I would ask is, I think, in fact, keep it in your mind, they are raising their taxes to better the business of Rapid City, increase the business of Rapid City. And I would always say, just say you want a twenty percent increase in business, what they're proposing in the plaza is a pre-localized interest. So I would say, I would prefer to have twenty percent of two million people, being the terrorists from Mount Rushmore, than twenty percent of one hundred and fifty thousand people. So anyways, just remember very, very carefully, the plaza should be a broader interest to our terrorists, they're new dollars, we're never going to get them again, they're going to go home, and we'll get a bigger bunch of chains in our person because of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Mary Renka, 528 Quincy Street. And if you'd just please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours, ma'am.
Mary Renka, 528 Quincy Street, another broken record, guys, I'm sorry, I appreciate all your time and efforts, I'm against it, I have two points for you. Number one, I'd like for you to consider the people who are speaking in favor of it, in light of whether they own property and businesses in the downtown area who are going to be paying these taxes. I've heard a lot of people in support of it who aren't going to be paying the tax. Number two, when the Civic Center was built, the areas, the people around there, the taxpayers around the Civic Center were not taxed to support it. When the Vicki Powers Park was built, the taxpayers around there were not taxed to support it. I too feel this is a very unfair tax, especially for us at medical clinic, who are not only not going to benefit from it, but are already struggling with increasing costs and reducing reimbursement rates. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We also have a speaker request form on item number fifty-nine from Dan Sefner. There again, sir, if you'd identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Dan Sefner, downtown resident, business, property owner, and currently live downtown. I've been downtown thirty-five years, we need to look at this as a vision and a vision for the future, a great, great starting point. I know I've said this before, again, I don't want to be repetitive either, but as I listen to, and I listen to how we've worked on this budget, looked at this budget, I was in a meeting not very long ago with our Governor, Governor Rounds, talking about the demand for people wanting to live in South Dakota, and how we need to have jobs for them. This was less than six months ago, as we know how things are moving, I believe our budget is in line and can move forward. So once again, I look at this as a vision and a starting point to really make things happen. This is just the beginning. As we move on from Main Street Square with the Downtown Improvement District, and look at the outlying areas, we have Zone One, Zone Two, we have them for a reason. We are working closely with the Mount Rushmore Road Group, West Boulevard, School of Mines and Technology, once again, this is only a beginning, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Dan, I believe it's Schuber, item number sixty-three. Is that correct?
Schuber, Dan Schuber, I'm with Daktronics.
Very good. Go ahead, sir, the floor is yours.
Just for you guys who don't know, Daktronics is the world leader, and probably the reason this number sixty-three is here, with ninety-five percent of the signs here in town, electronic digital signs, from the billboards to electronic message centers you guys see on the businesses. I strongly urge you guys not to pass this moratorium, I guess work with Daktronics, we actually have a legal department that we've invested money into, and a staff that have worked with these regulations across the country, not being biased, working with you guys on getting a correct code put into place of some sort, that way it's not biased towards the business or the city, so I extend the arm out for an invitation to work with Daktronics on this deal, so, thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Jim Jackson, item number sixty-three. Mr. Jackson, if you'd just identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours, sir.
Sir, Jim Jackson, I've been a resident of Rapid City for pushing fifty-five-plus years, I've also worked for Rosenbaum Signs for thirty-eight years, our company has been in business for eighty-two years, and yes, we are the ones that put that obnoxious sign on the top of the Alex Johnson that nobody liked at the time. Could not understand why technology had to light something up like that at the time. Today, that is a landmark. I'm not sure on this moratorium, or if we are looking at just off-premise signs, or if we're looking at all signage. If we are putting a moratorium on all types of signage, if we do this at this time of year, going into the busiest season for businesses in town, you're going to be hurting people with the way the economy is going right now. So with that in mind, if, I'm not against a moratorium, I'm not against us looking at this, but I think it's a poor timing for it, I think it's something we should do after the busiest season, I think we're going to hurt people right now. I'm afraid that that's going to keep going for a long time. I'm also concerned, in the paper there, it had that one of your concerns was safety, regarding electronic message centers. I have emailed all of you, so you all know what I'm about to say about the Civic Center sign. Down on Omaha Street, we have not only an off-premise sign that the city put up, we have a sign that is at a very busy intersection here in Rapid City, and we also have a sign that is selling third-party advertising. Now, if we're going to take third-party advertising away from the message center, the electronics business and stuff, you're going to help the radio and the TV people, because that's where that money's going to go. And so be that, I guess if that's what happens. I'd like to be a part of the solution, I know you're putting a committee together, I would like to volunteer for that committee, I think I have a lot of ideas and suggestions, I'd like to work with a solution, I think a solution is needed, there are a lot of loopholes, I agree with that, and we do need to do something, but I really would like to give some consideration to the businesses that you might be affecting. If you want to have some leadership, and you want to have a moratorium, and you want to show what is probably in your eyes maybe wrong, maybe we should shut down that Civic Center sign, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We also have a speaker request form from Brendan Casey, item number sixty-three. There again, Mr. Casey, if you'd please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Hanks, and members of the Council. I sent you guys an email with an attachment today, I'm hoping you all got... No? Some did, some didn't. That is in regard to generally the issuance of moratoriums, and the reasons in there I won't go over again, but we certainly think it is a punitive measure. If the intent of this moratorium is to, what, I guess we want to relook at the sign credit, what I've heard in the media as loophole, a little history on the sign code, one of the first things a very Green, Jason Green, did when he was here as City Attorney, and I, and without much input from the sign industry, the committee was made up of largely people who didn't like signs, that adopted a code right off the Scenic America website with really no difference given to landowners, private business, or the industry. We have lived with that code for the last five years. Today, I checked with your building inspection, and under this present code, there has been twenty-seven billboards torn down which applied for credit, there was actually more than that torn down, the exact numbers, I don't know what they were. Do you know how many new signs have been erected in the city of Rapid City? One. What you're talking about overhauling is a sign code that borders on a ban, is probably unconstitutional, and yet we're talking about constricting this code further. For some of you, some of you haven't been here during the genesis of the sign code, and nor do permits come in where people would be asking for variances, so I don't think most of the Council is familiar with this sign credit concept. The signed credits were instituted so that the billboards you tear down create kind of a false currency that could only be spent in this false economy of the city, meaning the more of your private property you tear down, the more we're going to let your business go forward and expand. Of course, we haven't liked it, we've complied with it, but you're talking now about further tightening a code that is really a de facto ban, I think you're talking, we're going to run into some constitutional issues for sure, this time. And also what we're talking about is a regulatory taking of private property. We are not in favor of the moratorium, and we're not in favor of playing around with the sign code, particularly in this manner. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form, item number seventy-one, from Sid Hanson. Mr. Hanson, if you'd please identify yourself, and then you have the floor, sir.
I have three overheads that I'd like assistance on to have set up.
We'll get Bob, and before we start timing you, we'll get you all set up. Yeah, we'll get it straightened out there for you. Okay, there you go, sir, and there again, just identify yourself, and the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Sid Hanson, I'm a property owner and representative for fifty-two acres of undeveloped land called Hanson Heights, I'm here to make a public comment on an improper ordering of sidewalks on the north side of East St. Patrick Street. This is the letter that I would have delivered last week, or two weeks ago, with two enclosures, and I believe each of you have received that, it's been distributed tonight, and I've sent If you go to enclosure two, what is shown, or enclosure one, what is shown in enclosure one are the city's actions against property owners without representation. At a Public Works Committee on July fifteenth, two thousand eight, a ward alderman introduced concerns for lack of sidewalks in his ward. The city staff concurred, the ward alderman moved for ordering of sidewalks, it passed unanimously, without discussion. This took just three minutes, it's the same time I have tonight to make public comment. A week later, the city council approved ordering for sidewalks by consent, without discussion. The order is legally binding, tens of thousands of dollars, without property owner representation or even notification. A week later, notification letters are sent out. This is enclosure number two. What is shown in enclosure number two is the actions of the city with property owner representation. At the Public Works Committee on October fourteenth, two thousand eight, property owners, represented now by a registered architect, brought our concerns for the lack of documentation and the short cutting of the city's planning process. The ward alderman makes a motion to table and stalls further action. With difficulty, more of our concerns are shared with the Public Works Committee on May fifteenth, two thousand nine. Our discovery process found a one-page investigation. This is the investigation, you see that also as an attachment, and no record of citizen complaints. Our traffic report study dispelled what has been called the well-worn trail myth. The committee overwhelmingly recommended withdrawal by a three-to-one vote, if the chair had been present, it had been a four-to-one vote. At the city council meeting on May eighteenth, two thousand nine, the chair allowed an improper substitute motion by the same ward alderman, calling now for development plans, which causes more delay. And I want to make abundantly clear that this delay was not at the request of the property owners. These two enclosures show the actions of an overzealous ward alderman and a city administration, however well-intended. We, the property owners of Hanson Heights, are calling for a proper resolution by simply withdrawing the ordering of sidewalks as recommended by the Public Works Committee on May eighteenth, two thousand nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. We also have a speaker request form from Terry Olson, from Lamar Advertising, item number sixty-three. And Terry, if you'd just please identify yourself, and then the floor is yours, sir.
Certainly, Terry Olson, lease manager for Lamar Advertising. Speaking against item number sixty-three, we want to go on record that we're against the moratorium. From our office, we have the whole state of South Dakota and southwest Minnesota, part of my job is to deal with signs, signed ordinance, governments. I've never been on a, I've never been under a moratorium where it lasted less than six months. So if this moratorium is passed, I would encourage you to expedite it, again, I've never seen a moratorium less than six months. I want to correct Mr. Casey, on the one sign that was built, actually that sign was not built, we tore one of ours down, somebody else built a sign in his place. So there's no other sign, no other new billboards have been built in Rapid City since two thousand two, and we've tore down a bunch. So we just want to go on record that we're against the moratorium, and again, if the moratorium is passed, we would encourage the Council to expedite it, and again, we'll also available for, to be on the board or be on the committee to, to the code. By the way, again, I have the whole state of South Dakota, and there's no other sign code that's tougher anywhere in the state, including southwest Minnesota than Rapid City's. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. I have no further speaker request forms on any items fifty-three through eighty, is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to any items, items fifty-three through eighty, inclusive? Mrs. Frye, why don't you go ahead and come forward, and if you'd please identify yourself, and...
Hi, it's Julie Mueller, thank you all.
All right, I remember you from high school, my apologies for calling you by your maiden name.
That's okay, that's okay. I just wanted to ask who was going to have the bunch of petitions, or the signs, signatures that we gave, because I do have one more list, will it remain with you, or who will it remain with, because I have one more list of probably, I think there's maybe twenty, twenty-some names on it, but there might be a couple of duplicates on it, and I'd just like to ask you all to remember that we did solicit business owners, as well as property owners, because it's the businesses downtown that makes downtown vital. And if you lose those businesses, I mean, you're just going to have vacant buildings with, you know, property owners paying those taxes, and we'd like to remind you that we are opposed to it, we're pro-growth, we're pro-all that stuff, we just think if it's a park, all parks are levied off of our property taxes, paid by everyone. You want everyone to enjoy it, we would like everyone to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mueller. Okay, I have no further speaker request forms, we are dealing with items fifty-three through eighty, anyone else? Go ahead, and if you'd come up and identify yourself for the record.
Hello, my name is Clancy Kingsbury, Mayor, Council.
Hello, my name is Clancy Kingsbury, mayor, council. There's been some talk about opposing the downtown district. I just want to say, as representative for three different properties downtown, that I am in favor of it, and I think the majority of the downtown is in favor of it, as we've seen in past meetings. We need to move forward, yes, downtown is vibrant as it's ever been, but it's not a time to just stand still and ride those. With all the development on the edge of the city, we need to keep our downtown alive. And so I think we should go forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional speakers? Mr. Relinger, if you'd please go ahead and come forward and identify yourself for the record, and the floor will be yours, sir.
Steve Relinger, mayor, council. I spoke before on the same issue here, and I am the president of Downtown Association. And since we started this process, as I told you before, our membership now has almost tripled. So that tells you this for, and these are retailers that I'm talking about, retailers who are members of the Downtown Association. And we had a series of meetings during this, open meetings, and at every one of those meetings, I had to have one retailer that's a member of the Downtown Association that attended the meetings, that came up and said they weren't, they were opposed to it. So again, take a look at what's happened to us, we've tripled our membership, so that tells you the support we have from retailers, as well as business owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional speaker, any additional speakers? Mr. Tribby, come, please come forward and identify yourself for the record.
I'm Dan Tribby from Prairie Edge, and appreciate you guys' time. Just kind of want to reiterate a lot what Steve said. There's really a wave happening downtown, and in the last eighteen months, really good things have started to happen downtown. People are getting energized, businesses are coming down, you look at the buildings and the really lack of empty buildings, some really good things are happening. And I just think, I think people are looking at downtown, wanting to come in and become part of that. Part of it certainly has to do with the plaza and all the energy that Destination has generated in the last, again, eighteen months. And I just, I'm pleading with you guys, please keep this thing going. It's a good thing for Rapid City, it's a good thing for downtown Rapid City. And so many people in this room tonight, without having people stand up or wave or anything, or came here in support of this thing, they've been, they've been in support of this for two years, and the energy has only gotten, gotten bigger and stronger. And I'd just like to say, let's just keep this thing going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional speakers? We're dealing with items fifty-three through eighty, fifty-three through eighty. Go ahead and come up. Eric, again, if you'd please identify yourself for the record, and the floor will be yours.
Eric Hykes, five seventeen Seventh Street, downtown resident, six-two-five St. Joe, and also a business owner. I have a lot of very positives to say about the project that we're discussing and the bid. I think there's definitely real positives in the long term, and I'm voicing my support.
Thank you. Any additional speakers? We're dealing with items fifty-three through eighty, fifty-three through eighty. Going once, it's starting to feel like an auctioneer, going twice. Chair, would you look for a motion to close the public comment period, items fifty-three through eighty, please?
No.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number fifty-three, and we'll go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach, who's our vice chair of legal and finance. Could you please read that in, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number fifty-three, first reading ordinance, excuse me, fifty-five ninety-two, an ordinance amending section seventeen oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the city of Rapid City for a rezoning from no-use district to mobile home district, residential district of Rapid City, Pennington County, South Dakota, located at twenty-seven oh nine Cactus Drive. I believe the motion is for approval.
Yep, first reading, there are always for approval. We have a motion and a second for approval, first reading of ordinance fifty-five ninety-two. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number fifty-four, please.
Item number fifty-four, first reading ordinance fifty-five ninety-three, an ordinance amending section seventeen oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the city of Rapid City for a rezoning from no-use district to general commercial district, of a portion in fact D, located in, and, I don't need to read all this, correct?
No, just read the location.
Okay.
So South Dakota located at...
South Dakota located at two thousand Lancer Drive. Motion for approval?
We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item fifty-five, please.
Item number fifty-five, first reading ordinance fifty-five ninety-four, an ordinance amending section seventeen oh six of chapter seventeen of Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the city of Rapid City for a rezoning from no-use district to general commercial district. So located in Rapid City, Pennington County, South Dakota, located at thirty-one fifty, East Highway forty-four. Motion for approval?
We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on that motion? We're dealing with first reading ordinance fifty-five ninety-four. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item fifty-six, please.
Item number fifty-six, first reading ordinance fifty-five ninety-five, an ordinance amending section seventeen oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Jim Letner for a rezoning from general commercial district to light industrial district. This is along legal, so it's located at south, at East St. Charles Street and west of Creek Drive. Motion for approval?
We have a motion and a second for approval. We're dealing with ordinance fifty-five ninety-five, first reading. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number fifty-seven, please.
Item number fifty-seven, first reading ordinance fifty-five ninety-six, an ordinance amending section seventeen oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the city of Rapid City for a rezoning from no-use district to mobile home residential district, and this is located at twenty-eight oh three Cactus Drive. Motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, first reading of ordinance number fifty-five ninety-six. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item fifty-eight, please.
Item number fifty-eight, first reading ordinance fifty-five ninety-seven, an ordinance amending section seventeen oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the city of Rapid City for a rezoning from no-use district to mobile home residential district, located at twenty-seven oh six Cactus Drive. Motion for approval?
We have a motion, a second for approval, we're dealing with first reading ordinance number fifty-five ninety-seven. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item fifty-nine, please.
Item number fifty-nine, first reading ordinance number fifty-five ninety-one, an ordinance establishing the downtown business improvement district by adding chapter three point two-five to the Rapid City Municipal Code. Motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Patty Martenson.
Yes, thank you, mayor, I have a question for Jason.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Earlier, we passed a memorandum of understanding, and it included a severability clause. Would it be possible to include that severability clause in this ordinance?
Mr. Green.
It certainly is, if the council would like it. I do not advise it, because this has always been discussed as a, one particular idea, and if one part fails, then I think you would see support erode for other parts of it. From a legal standpoint, if you want to do it, you certainly can.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Additional, additional comments? Let's go to, Jason, do you have anything else? Okay, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, I have a question for Dan Tribby, if he's willing to...
Sure. Go ahead and state your question, please.
My question is, Dan, what's your thought on the severability clause? I hope I'm not catching you off guard. The severability clause that Alderwoman Martenson just mentioned, are you or somebody prepared to address your opinion on that?
Or how about Mr. Sefner?
Mr. Sefner.
Okay. Or how about both Dan's?
We can do that.
Anyone named, anyone else named Dan wants to come up?
You won't find that in there.
Yeah, that's okay. I just want to make sure the wording, we're both on the same page, Mr. Quaker.
What is your question, Alderman Quaker? Can you repeat the question, please?
Alderwoman Martenson just alluded to a severability clause. Are you in favor of adding a severability clause, and are, I just want to get your opinion on that?
I think for myself, from a legal standpoint, I have to agree with Mr. Green, that so many of these things have been tied together, that we're really talking about the same, the same issue. There is provision, and hopefully I'm not going too far on it, but the board can shut this thing down. If it's not working, there is those escape clauses in there, and I think that's probably what you're referring to. But I think that was a large part of what they talked about when we put this together, was making sure that, that people feel real comfortable moving forward on this, and that, you know, this thing has got to be successful. It has to be successful.
Okay.
I'm a little bit at a loss on this, but, you know, that's, that is the big thing, has been, have the did not go forward, then, you know, that's certainly going to put a lot of roadblocks up. I'm not sure if that's, if that's covering that, Sam, or...
Okay, let's go back to Alderman Quaker, sure you have the floor.
And I have a question for a city attorney, Jason Green. Jason, is this considered a legislative action or an administrative action?
Jason?
I presume you're talking about the passage of the whole ordinance, is that?
Yeah.
Then, yes, that is definitely legislative action, subject to referral.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Additional discussion, and let me ask a procedural question. Okay, okay. Motion on the floor is for approval, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item number sixty, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number sixty, second reading ordinance number fifty-five eighty-six, an ordinance repealing chapter one point zero eight of the Rapid City Municipal Code relating to the wards, precincts, and adopting a new revised chapter one point zero eight of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Motion for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, mayor. What's linked to the agenda is, is the legal description, and I think from that, I can gather what this is, but I was wondering if we, for the benefit of the council and the community, if we could briefly put the map up on the...
Do you have a copy of the map?
Or describe...
Why don't you bring it up, like, bring it up electronically, if you can. And my apologies, Alderman Quaker, your light doesn't seem to be popping up, any push? Is it?
It must be a plot.
Give it, give it another push, is it? Hmm? All right, Sam, just give my attention when you wish to speak. My apologies, we'll get it fixed before next meeting. Why don't you push it once, just make sure it works. There it goes.
Well, I'm going to have to unplug you, Bob, I don't see another. We have another cord up here.
You second? Your second one, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Preston, can you just briefly describe the areas that we're talking about?
Can I draw all of this? Pencil up there. Right here? Should work. This first area that this was addressed would be in Ward Two. This is the annexed area that the council annexed here, and within the last year. Essentially, we placed them in Ward Two, and with various precincts in that area. The other area is up here in Ward Three. The only thing we did there was make some changes to the precincts, not to the ward. And essentially, we did this at the request of the county, so they weren't splitting school districts. That's it in a nutshell, unless there's a specific question about something.
Alderman Quaker, any other questions?
Thank you, mayor. I support this map and the ordinance amendment. However, I do think it's important to note, as we move into the census, and once the data is received, there will be a round of redistricting, and I, I think it's appropriate to put a plug in now for the concept of a, of a redistricting commission that would include people from the county, city, and school district, and a cross-section of the community to ensure that they're, that the ward lines and precinct lines are adequately drawn to fit the new census. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing no further lights, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number sixty-one, please.
Item number sixty-one, a request by Renner Associates for Robert Acres, for a preliminary plat on lots one R and two R, east of Mall Business Center subdivision, located east of North La Crosse Street between East Mall Drive and East Dis Drive. Motion for approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item sixty-two, please.
Item sixty-two, authorized mayor and finance officer to sign amended agreement between the city of Rapid City and DTH LLC to allow for acceptance of public improvements before the completion of sidewalks for Rainbow Ridge subdivision. Motion for approval.
Do we have a second, please? We have a motion and a second, discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, mayor. Is this, is this the same developer with which, with which we have a resolution in place to deny surety? And can I ask how this fits in with that, our resolution, please?
Yes, let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, mayor, and I thank the Alderman for the question, because I was going to remind the council that that resolution was in place. There are really two ways to look at this. The resolution was not to accept new surety from the developer. This surety essentially replaces an existing surety, but it also adds an agreement that we don't have today. So I believe the council could look at this either way and decide that, based on the resolution you previously adopted, that you don't want to accept this, or you could consider this to be a continuation of surety you'd previously accepted before that resolution was in place. I think at the end of the day, this puts us into a better position than we're in today with that developer, so I don't have an objection to the council approving this, but I certainly would think that the council should give it due consideration.
Okay, Alderman Quaker, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, mayor. So Jason, if we deny this, what does that specifically mean, and if we approve it, what does it specifically mean?
Jason?
Thank you. I believe we have surety in place right now that expires in maybe July. This would allow us to replace that surety with new, updated surety with updated estimates. If we pull the surety, then we're going to be in a position of having to go out and install sidewalks. If we enter into this agreement, we'll have surety for the installation of those sidewalks, and at the time, lots are...
Is this the same developer with which we have a resolution in place to deny surety? And can I ask how this fits in with that, our resolution, please?
Yes, let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, and I thank the Alderman for the question, because I was going to remind the council that that resolution was in place. There are really two ways to look at this. The resolution was not to accept new surety from the developer. This surety essentially replaces an existing surety, but it also adds an agreement that we don't have today. So I believe the council could look at this either way and decide that, based on the resolution you previously adopted, that you don't want to accept this, or you could consider this to be a continuation of surety you'd previously accepted before that resolution was in place. I think at the end of the day, this puts us into a better position than we're in today with that developer, so I don't have an objection to the council approving this, but I certainly would think that the council should give it due consideration.
Okay, Alderman Quaker, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Jason, if we deny this, what does that specifically mean? And if we approve it, what does it specifically mean?
Jason?
Thank you. I believe we have surety in place right now that expires in maybe July. This would allow us to replace that surety with new, updated surety with updated estimates. If we pull the surety, then we're gonna be in a position of having to go out and install sidewalks. If we enter into this agreement, we'll have surety for the installation of those sidewalks, and at the time lots are developed, the builders would put those sidewalks in. So it would impose an obligation on the city that we don't have and could avoid, I guess, is what I'm saying.
If we pass it, it imposes an obligation.
Jason?
I think if you don't pass it, we're going to incur that obligation at the time the surety nears expiration, and we have to go and pull it. Once we draw on the letter of credit, then we're gonna have the obligation to install the sidewalks, and we probably don't want to do that before they build the lots. I think the developer would be in a position to say, you pulled my surety, you've gotta go install the sidewalk now.
So this is an extension of what's already in place? And how long is this extended for?
Jason?
If you give me one moment, I'll look that up. I don't remember. I think it's two years. It's two years from the approval of this agreement. So it'd be two years from today.
Is this time sensitive? I mean, if we continue this for two weeks, knowing that this whole process has been fairly contentious, and there's three council members not here tonight?
Let's go to, this has Bob from Growth Management, maybe you can give us an answer if it's time sensitive. That's our, Mr. Alderman Quaker. Bob?
No, we could continue it for two weeks, if you'd like. The surety, I believe, expires in June, so we'd have some time.
Okay, Alderman Quaker, the floor is still yours, sir.
For the sake of discussion, I'd like to offer a motion to continue this to the next public works meeting.
Okay, we have substitute motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Discussion on the continuation motion only, please. So the motion is to continue this, or actually send us back to the next public works committee meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Public Works, who's the motion on the floor? Okay? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to item number sixty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number sixty-three. Resolution establishes a moratorium on the acceptance of applications for and the issuance of certain signed permits. Yield to the floor.
We have a motion, please. Do we have a second? We have a motion and second. Discussion on that motion? Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. What's driving this? Is there a specific proposal, or is it general?
I think I can answer that. I was the one that brought this to the attention. We've had a couple of different applications for replacing static boards with digital billboards. And under the current sign code, there is no requirement to use any signed credits when you do that. So what ends up happening is, is you take a traditional billboard, you put up an electronic board, and all of a sudden you go from having one message that the traveling public can view to having multiple messages, typically every five to, I think, eight seconds that sign changes. And there is no requirement to use any of those signed credits. It's been my opinion and others that I've talked to that if indeed we're going to allow the conversion of static billboards to electronic billboards, it's only appropriate, since you're going to what I'm gonna call denser use or a higher visibility of the number of messages that are seen on that one board, that there should be some requirement to, in essence, spend some of those signed credits. Currently, for every new sign you put up, if it's a traditional billboard, a static board, you have to use two signed credits. But what's happening is, is we've had applications where people are going to existing boards and asking to convert from a static board to an electronic board, and of course, there is no requirement to use up those signed credits. The entire, the intent of the original sign code revision was to try and eliminate the sheer number of billboards. And that was the spirit of the sign code. There again, for every new board you put up, you take two down. Well, if you start allowing the transition to electronic billboards, you will never get a reduction, and what you'll get is a proliferation of the number of what I'll call messages that the traveling public sees. And in my mind, the spirit of the sign code was designed to actually eliminate the number of those messages. So that's what's driving this. I hope I answered your question.
I think so, if I have a follow-up, Mayor.
Sure, go ahead, please.
This is for off-premise signage, okay? And that leads to my concern. If we're going to have him put a moratorium in place for one hundred and twenty days, and we're going to set up the task force to review the code, then I think that we need to review more than just the electronic provisions of the code. And the reason I say that is because I think that the reason the electronic boards are becoming so popular is it's become very easy to take an on-premise electronic sign and run off-premise advertising on it because you have an ATM inside, or you have someone visiting inside for a certain day, and that's considered on-premise. So I think that if we're going to put in a moratorium in place, I would support that if the task force would have a broader mandate of reviewing the entire code and not just this, because if we tighten down on the electronic provisions of the code, then it stands to reason there may be other provisions of the code that can be loosened.
And Alderman Quaker, I owe you an apology. That is actually included in the moratorium. There's a paragraph that also talks about electronic reader boards, and I think that's specifically what you're referring to. So my apologies, I think you asked if this dealt with off-premise signs. I said, yes. And if I gave you the impression that it was dealing with only those, that's my apology.
If you don't mind, Mayor, if you'd be willing to let me ask you a question.
Yes, please.
I presume that you would be appointing the task force. Would you be open to the idea of the mission of this task force being a review of the entire code and not just the electronic provisions? And I also presume that you would also be in favor of having some sign industry representatives on that board.
The answer is that, yes. Those are all good ideas, and yes, I'd be very acceptable to those.
You'd be okay with a broader review of the code, then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman. Jason Green, did you have a... Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a very minor amendment. On the very last line, the effective date is listed as after the first day of March 2010. I think the council should amend that to say after the fifteenth day of March 2010, after today's date.
Okay. Is that all right with the motion maker? Does everyone see that? Who is the motion maker? I'm sorry?
Costello.
Oh, Aaron Costello. Can you see what he's talking about, Aaron?
At the very end of the last, be it further resolved, it refers to, takes effect from and after the first day of March. That should say after the fifteenth day of March. It should refer to today's date.
And that's all right with the motion? How about the second? Okay. Further discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have concern about the moratorium. I obviously, at legal and finance, was fine with moving it forward. The only concern I have is when we get into these committees and reviewing these things over and over and over, downtown parking, signages, those types of things, is that if we could break it down, I could understand the broad view, and I think that there needs to be a broad view taken, but if we could break it down into pieces and allow for an expedited process, I would, I'd appreciate that. I could more support something like that. I understand that the need for checking it out if they're gonna replace static boards with electronic ones just at will, but I don't want to see this thing go on for months on end. I don't think that that's necessary or appropriate. So I mean, if someone could amend it to be a smaller window and maybe break it into two pieces of having the off-premise sign and just billboards specifically into two pieces, because I think the off-premise sign may take a lot more longer than to actually see. I could support something like that, but it'd have to be a shorter window for me, like less than thirty days, to allow these people to move on with their lives, because I know how these things work. They get a committee put together, the committee meets, they bring back a decision. We can't decide, they continue it. So it goes from thirty days to sixty days to ninety days, one hundred and twenty days. Before you know it, it's into two years and three years. So I could support something. If we're gonna do something quickly, within thirty days, I think there's, I think Mr. Mayor has an intention in mind, and if he moves that forward quickly, I could support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd Lacray.
Thank you, Mayor. One of my first tasks when I was down in the council was to be on that signboard task force. And Mr. Wyffenbach is exactly right. It gets dragged on, we get into the flashing, how are we gonna measure it? We get into a lot of detail, and it dragged on for, I believe, it was almost over a year. So when you get into one hundred and twenty days, I think he's exactly right, you need to be specific of what you're gonna work on. The mayor had made the reference of using signboard credits to, when you go to a digital one. At the time when the task force was on there, the task force viewed it as, you know, if you're getting rid of an older one and actually getting an improved vision, and a prime example is the one in the Gap where it's Cold Stone Creamy Mall. It had a great big sign there, and it reduced it down to size, it made it safer, and that was the direction of it. So I could support this if it was amended to ninety days.
I'd make that motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to, let's deal with the amendment first, and then we'll come back to the motion as amended. So the motion on the floor is to amend it to read ninety days instead of one hundred and twenty days. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Whoops, Jason Green.
Just for clarification, there's two references to one hundred and twenty days. I presume the intent is to amend both sections to ninety days.
That was my assumption also.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate to make a second substitute motion?
That would be in order.
If it found any legs, I'd like to make the moratorium for thirty days and break it down into two pieces. One piece for off-premise signs, and the other piece for billboards that were on-premise.
Okay. Is there a... That's a second substitute motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Seeing no second, the motion dies of lack of second. We're back to the first substitute motion, which is the ninety days. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, the ninety-day amendment. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're back to the original motion as amended, which basically is the resolution amended to state ninety days in both the sections where previously referred to one twenty. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Okay, that does take us to item number sixty-four. Mr. Wyffenbach, if you would, please.
Item number sixty-four. Recommend option C for additional access for the Star West complex. A motion for approval.
Second. Okay, we, sorry about that. We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Signify, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number sixty-five, please.
Item number sixty-five. Direct city attorney's office negotiate with Kenneth L. Kirkaby for real estate listing services agreement for Wally Byham property. Motion for approval.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger. Bet you're going to abstain from the vote, aren't you?
Yes, I am, Mayor. Since I'm the president of the Black Hills Association of Realtors, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Very good, thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item with Alderman Ron Wyffen, or Ron Kroger abstaining. Item number sixty-six, please.
Item number sixty-six. Approved special event permit for Kirk Funeral Home for free downtown parking from nine AM to one PM on Friday, July ninth, 2010, Friday, December third, 2010, and Friday, December tenth, 2010. Motion for approval.
We have a motion and second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number sixty-seven.
Item number sixty-seven. Authorized mayor and finance officer to sign the application documents and the letter of support for the Safe Routes to School grant for Meadowbrook Elementary School in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Motion for approval.
We have a motion and second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Wyffenbach. Nice job. Item number sixty-eight under Public Works, and we'll go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number sixty-eight, this is with the Stony Creek South subdivision. Approve with stipulations requested by Spirit Consulting Incorporated for J. Skoll construction for vacation of private access and public utility easement, an area generally described as being located south of Catron Boulevard between Sheridan Lake Road and Bent Drive, and I move to approve with stipulations.
We have a motion, second for approval of item number sixty-eight, which is the vacation of a private access easement and public utility easement. And the motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item sixty-nine, please.
Item sixty-nine is to approve with stipulations requested by Wiss Associates for ATA for a fence height exception to allow a six-foot fence on the front, side, and rear setbacks of an area generally described as being located south of North Street between North Third Street and North Second Street, and I move to approve with stipulations.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion, and approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seventy, please.
Item seventy is a report on options for a neighborhood meeting on the development at Catron Boulevard and Fifth Street, and I yield to the floor.
Okay, can we have a motion, and then we'll discuss this? It'd be a motion to acknowledge. We have a motion and second to acknowledge. Discussion on that motion? Bob, do you have some information for us?
Yes, there has been a meeting set up for April sixth at five PM on the site, and there's been notices sent out to the surrounding homeowners.
When you say onsite?
Onsite.
Literally, out?
Out there, on the ground.
Okay. Unless it's raining?
Yes. Then we'll sit in the cars.
Or stand in the street. Okay. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Patty Martenson.
Yes, thank you. Just a clarification, this is in conjunction with the Planning Board Commission, and I believe they're meeting that same day?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Patty. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker. Whoop, I don't get your mic there, Sam.
Is there a rain location?
We have not set one at this time, no.
We could just do that as part of this. I don't think we need to do it right now, but we could just have a plan B.
Okay.
Bob, why don't you make arrangements, maybe at Grandview? Bob, what time in the day was that?
About five PM.
Five PM, I think we're okay. If you could contact Grandview and just make sure we have a backup in the gym there in case the weather is inclement.
Okay.
Okay. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the report. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? What's that? April sixth, five o'clock. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item seventy-one, please.
Item seventy-one is to authorize staff to advertise for bids for East St. Patrick Street sidewalks. Estimated cost, thirty-five thousand dollars. I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. I have been opposed to this since the very beginning. I don't particularly like to order in sidewalks, but in this particular case, I took a trip this morning, actually, and I went from West Boulevard all the way down to Campbell Street. And the only properties that do not have sidewalks on on either side of the road are these two properties. So I guess I would have a question for Mr. Hanson if he would, if he wanted to answer it.
Why don't you go ahead and state your question, please?
My question is, when do you, when do you believe that you will be developing that property so you can put the sidewalks in?
Mr. Hanson.
All right, thank you. Hanson Heights is a property that's been in the family for, Hanson Family for a number of years. It's a property that's closely associated with the South Dakota School of Mines. There are two routes for development. One is to develop it in conjunction with the School of Mines. Anyone who develops property with government realizes it takes time, and it has taken an inordinate amount of time in terms of a potential sale for the South Dakota School of Mines, and that's still ongoing. So that's indefinite in terms of when such a, a sale might occur and it would be developed by the School of Mines. Second approach is develop it privately. Develop it privately requires a, a development planning, which we have been instituting. So can we give you a definitive time as to when sidewalks would go in? No. Do you have a process in your city for a government for installing sidewalks? Yes. And you have an appropriate time to, in which sidewalks are installed. We have shown in our traffic studies that that traffic in that area, that corridor, is indeed very small. We have shown to the city that it's appropriate to utilize the sidewalks on the south side of, of St. Patrick Street. If you want to take a parallel project, you can step across the street on Omaha Street, and you will see that there are no sidewalks. It's the same issue. We're talking about green space.
Okay. Ron, you still on the floor, sir?
All right. Your negotiations you're having with South Dakota School of Mines, I mean, are you, what, fifty, fifty percent chance that might happen, or, I mean, is, are you just?
You're in real estate. You're, you're in real estate. Until you close the deal, you never know.
Well, I mean, you, you made the comment that you've been negotiating with them, basically, or there's some, or there's, how long is, how long has that been going on? I mean, you certainly have to know if you're barking up the wrong tree, or if there's a real interest by the School of Mines. I mean, where are you at in that process?
If you're dealing with a private individual, you can probably set some probabilities. When you're dealing with government entities, universities, legislatures, governor, city, city wouldn't be involved in this, but it's indefinite. You don't know. Truly is indefinite.
Okay, that's all I have.
Very good. Additional questions? Additional comments? Well, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's a couple of points that need to be made regarding this. I agree with Mr. Hanson that process is important, and this is why I was in support of, of an extension in May of, of oh nine to bring forward those development plans. I, I think that it's also important to remember that this area is hard to, to travel in, in terms of being a pedestrian, or in a wheelchair, or in a, on a bicycle. The south side does not have curb cuts, and north side has a rutted path, and it is difficult to use. EADA, Americans with Disabilities Act is civil rights legislation went into place in nineteen ninety. City Rapid City, as are all other government entities, required to have a plan in place. And the plan doesn't mean that everything needs to be done at once, but it does mean that there needs to be a plan, and it needs to be followed through on. I am in favor of looking at the other areas. I think Omaha Street is a different comparison because of the lack of businesses on, on that one side. We're talking about an area on St. Patrick Street that has a number of businesses and entities that have been built up over the last ten years, and the time has come to put this in. So I speak in, in favor of the, of the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Further discussion? The motion on the floor is for approval, and this is to authorize the staff to advertise for bids. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seventy-two, please.
Item number seventy-two is acknowledge the report on bidding and big bid prices for annual maintenance materials. I move to acknowledge the report.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge the report. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you much, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to ask for a breakdown of the report from Mr. Ellis, if we could.
Okay. Mr. Ellis?
At the Public Works Committee meeting, I reported that when we did these two specific projects, the limestone gravel and the ready-mixed concrete, that we followed state statute, which essentially requires that we advertise in the local newspaper, the Rapid City Journal. On two separate weekends, we did that, as we do with all of our projects. And I will say that we did go just a little bit above and beyond on this specific project. Typically, we don't send emails out to prospective bidders. On these projects, we did. We emailed Hills Materials, Birds All Sand and Gravel, and Pete Leeden Sun. So we did notify those three businesses that this was coming out. Unfortunately, only one of the bidders responded. The other two didn't. But essentially, that is the report I gave at the Public Works Committee meeting.
Thank you very much. You'll to the floor.
Okay. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're under the bids. Mr. Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. We have six bids this evening. The first bid is item number seventy-three is for landfill leachate removal remediation. Received six bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Belfour Environmental in an amount of two hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and eight dollars and thirty cents.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid to Belfour Environmental for a total dollar amount of two hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and eight dollars and thirty cents. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is the St. Andrew Street reconstruction, Lincoln Avenue to Elm Avenue. We received four bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Simon Contractors of South Dakota, Inc. in an amount of eight, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-two cents.
We have a motion and a second to award the contract to Simon Contractors of South Dakota, Inc. for eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is for the street rehabilitation project, Arrow Street, Farlow Avenue, and Culvert Street. Received four bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from J. and J. Asphalt Company in an amount of two hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
We have a motion and a second for approval, and this is to award the contract to J. and J. Asphalt Company for a total dollar amount of two hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is a landfill gas collection system. Received ten bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Quinn Construction, Incorporated for schedules one and two in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
We have a motion and a second to award the, the contract to Quinn Construction, Inc. both schedule one and schedule two for a total dollar amount of nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is bus shelter renovation. Received four bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Sims Glass for unit price one thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents for a total extended price of fifty-eight thousand dollars.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid to Sims Glass for the extended price of fifty-eight thousand dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The last item this evening, Mayor, is for the one new current model year vacuum street sweeper for the street division. Received two bids as listed. Staff is recommending the bid from Sheehan Max Sales and Equipment for the sweeper, less the trade-in, for a combined total of two hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
We have a motion and a second to award the contract to Sheehan Max Sales and Equipment for a total combined price of two hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Those were some good bids. Saved some money.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we even got a local, even got a local guy doing the machinery bid. That's, that's good to see. Okay, that does take us through the end of the bids. So we are on to item number, let's see, we have no items from mayors. We're on to council items and liaison reports. We're on to item number seventy-nine. Update on sales tax revenue. Alderman Quaker. Alderman Quaker, you have the floor, sir.
I was just wondering if we could, if we could get a brief update on, on where we stand.
That we can. Mr. Preston, I think I can probably, I think I just saw a report come through. The only numbers that we have on the accrual basis, which is comparing January two thousand and nine to the January two thousand and ten, we are still down about the same amount as we've been trending, and that's about three, three point eight percent, Jim? Three point nine five, which for the month was about fifty-six thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yep. And now, here's what, and let me add to this. And as it continues on, it's interesting because our sales tax revenue is down a little bit, but our triple B tax is still up. So our triple B is still coming in ahead of last year. So the trend seems to be flat. We're hoping for an improvement, but that's where we're at. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. So, so we're, so for twenty oh nine compared to twenty oh eight, we were at minus two point six, right?
That was for the year.
That was for the entire year.
Yeah, in January, we were almost, if I'm, I think we're almost flat. January oh nine to January oh eight, I think it was almost identical. Because if you remember the first part of oh nine, I think we were pretty much flat. We'll, we'll get, quite enough. I'll forward everything to you.
So then, my question is, and I realize that there's a time and a place to discuss twenty twelve, but I think it is, it probably is okay to bring up at this point that our twenty twelve revenue projections were still set based on several years ago. They were set at four percent over the previous year. So now that we're coming in too early, obviously, to draw conclusions for twenty ten, but we can draw conclusions based on last year that two point six percent down, instead of four percent up, that's a six point six percent difference, which is significant dollars. So at, at what point will we be talking about our twenty twelve revenue projections as we move into payment of the current plan and also the new plan?
I think that's a fair question. I think prior to the council taking up any discussions as far as twenty twelve, there's a couple of decisions you'll have to make. Number one is whether you're going to pay as you go, a five-year bond or seven-year bond. And the second thing is, is what do you want to use as far as revenue projections? I know that I've had that discussion with Mr. Preston, and Mr. Preston and I both agree it needs to be extremely conservative. So I, that is a, a decision the council will make, but I will, I will tell you that both the finance office and myself will be encouraging the council to go with just about as conservative as you, as you can get as far as revenue projections into the future. Sam, does that answer your question?
It does. I think so. We're, so we're, we're okay right now for twenty twelve because we have a number of outlets that have not been made.
In, in addition to that, we had some projects come in actually below, including, matter of fact, I had that conversation with Mr. Ellis this afternoon. The street projects that we actually had came in almost a quarter million dollars under budget. So, yes, the twenty twelve fund phase three cash flow were fine.
So one final question. We, so we have not yet had to spend into our undesignated cash or our reserves?
No.
Good.
Yep. The, the reserves basically are fifteen percent of our, and it gets a little bit confusing. Fifteen percent of our general fund is what we consider our reserves, and no, we have not spent into that. Isn't that correct, Mr. Preston? We are not below fifteen percent.
If we were, if we were, we're talking about the reserve, what we want to maintain is six, six and a half million dollars, which is about fifteen percent of our projected revenue.
Yeah, and we have not gone into that. That was a question. We have not spent into that.
About the undesigned cash?
Currently, we're not into that, but if, if that's what the question was.
Yes.
We also have a portion, though, of called undesigned cash, and what, what percentage is that, and are we spending into any of that?
Well, we always spend into undesigned cash, we, because we actually budgeted it. Why don't we do this? Let me get you, Mr. Preston, I know has been working on a report as far as showing where undesigned, undesigned cash was the previous year, and I think we'll actually have that in a couple of weeks. Okay? Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Weifman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was hoping that we could add, just giving us a, kind of a, have our finance officer give us a, an overview of twenty twelve funds, just so we can kind of have something in hard copy.
We can certainly bring that. I don't know if you're ready to bring that forward, are you, Jim?
Not necessarily today, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay.
As you bring forward the other request, I just wanted to add that request to that.
Now, why don't we do it this way? I would suggest go ahead and put on the next legal and finance committee meeting?
That'd be fine.
Because that way, it, it gets the discussion rolling as far as revenue projections and also the direction the council wants to go as far as pay-as-you-go, five-year, seven-year.
Sure.
So we'll just.
Mayor, if I could, Sam, I understand. The next legal and finance, you'd like to have the cash balance report for the general fund and then the twenty twelve spreadsheet.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Brothers, we'll make it happen. Okay, you want to make that as a motion?
That'd be my motion.
Okay. And, and a second. We have a motion and a second to add a couple of things to the next legal and finance committee meeting, and that is to report on the undesigned cash and also give us a, a overview of the twenty twelve cash balance spreadsheet. Okay? Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number eighty, twenty eleven budget meetings. Alderman Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I realize that it, it may not be practical to have a number of budget meetings prior to July, but I would like to see if we can, if, if we could look at that, but also to at least look at having, having meetings as early in July as possible because I, I, I think that it's going to be a very challenging budget process, and I, I think that there was discussion last year about starting the process for this year in January or February. There were some other things that came up apparently that kept that from happening, but I, I do not want to be, and, and I'm sure the council does not want, nor the mayor want to be in the position of, of trying to rush through this in August, given the important discussions that need to be held. So I guess I would just like to see what some of the other council members think about trying to request meetings earlier, and I'd like to see what Mayor Hanks thinks about that as well.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have you asked for budgets from departments already?
Most of those have already been turned in.
Okay. And may I ask what, what guidance you gave them in preparing the budgets?
I gave, the, the direction I gave to the departments is expect at best-case scenario, a no-growth budget. Worst-case scenario, a two to three percent reduction in all budgets.
Okay, thank you. I would be in favor of, of meetings. I could understand the difficulty, especially with this year. It's our twenty twelve year, so we're going to have lots of extra time together as it is, but I would certainly make every effort myself to participate. So, thank you.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. With enlightenment of that information, I think July would be a good start, at least to, to get going on it and to have the discussions going since she's, as you stated, you've already given them direction and that they, they've turned some stuff in. So, I mean, I think we can get started as soon as possible.
Thank you. With that, thank you, everyone. Just so you know, I, I actually had this very conversation with the finance office today, and my goal is to get the budget, make the budget presentation to the council on the June second and June first. That would be the Public Works and the Legal and Finance Committee meetings. That is the goal that we're going for. We're, we have shortened up the process, yet, and I'll be very candid, it's easier when you have a no-growth or actually a budget because there's, there's no more money to spend. So, I mean, it, it makes it a little bit easier. But the goal we have is to actually get that to you the first week of June. I think that'd be appropriate because, keep in mind, we will have some new council members. They will come on board the first meeting in July, and my recommendation is as soon as they're on board, you start with your budget hearings. Very good. Thank you for the discussion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Weifman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was thinking about moving something to legal and finance, but I think I'll just wait till after you make your presentation, and I just, but I'm till after you make your presentation, and I just, but I wanted to bring up the fact that the, the numerous amount of potholes we have, I'm assuming that there's going to be a huge expenditure in that area, and I don't want to shortchange it, so if, you know, if we can get this information and move forward, and if we've saved some money on twenty twelve, I think it may be important that we look at moving some of that into the infrastructure, so just as a, as a side note, thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? Look for a motion to acknowledge.
Look to acknowledge.
We have a motion, second to acknowledge. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to public hearing items. These are items eighty-one through ninety-four inclusive. Chair, look for a motion to open the public comment period on items eighty-one through ninety-four inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. We have one speaker request form, Fiona Harrison, who has been very patiently waiting there since seven o'clock, and she reminded me she has to drive all the way back to Fort Pierre. So with that, ma'am, you have the floor. If you please identify yourself for the record, please keep in mind you will have three minutes.
Certainly. My name is Fiona Harrison. Thank you so much for your time again. When we purchased Rockinham Ranch Estates, which is actually sixty acres, and if I can show you the area here, the park that we have developed is, is ten acres at this point. When we purchased that, many of the designs and initial designs and layouts were in place for the development, and it quickly became evident to us that the lots along bunker drive were very small, in part because we, the city of Rapid City had required that bunker drive be rerouted and widened. At this time, we made and were granted permission to reduce the rear setbacks of the lots along bunker drive from eighteen feet to twenty-five feet. This was granted at that time. I think you probably already have some of this information in a letter that was circulated to you earlier. The lots along bunker drive remain the smallest that we have on the development. Running along the east side of the lots that run along bunker drive is a high-line easement. So that, those power lines combined with those setbacks make them the least easy lots for us to build on. And in addition to this, we have resisted attempts to build anything higher than a ranch-style home on those lots, because we didn't want to block any views of the beautiful parks that you guys are putting in. It's just magnificent, I have to tell you. We're very impressed by that. Anyway, so remembering that it is very important, in fact, vital for us to continue to sell land, we have always planned that those smaller lots would be where the smaller houses would go, and as we moved up the hill and on through the whole of the sixty-acre developments, lots and homes would become larger and larger. We had the opportunity to sell some of these lots to the Teton Coalition. They're all owner-occupied homes, they're not, they're not rental properties at all. Many of these to people wanting to build governor's homes and ranch-style homes. And as we did with lot three, where there is a governor's home at present, we did insist on certain cosmetic additions to the homes to make them more attractive. So there are already two governor's homes on that development, one on lot twenty-one and one on lot three, and as you know, some others planned. The planning and zoning meeting, the original planning and zoning meeting, was to arrange, rearrange some minor setbacks on lot sixteen, which is down on the south side here. We felt that we particularly wanted a house, have a house there, because it would help the whole development by distracting attention from some other properties that are on the south of the development there. In total, there will be, there will be governor's homes along just that lower stretch of the development. We have actually turned down requests to sell land to people further into the development who want to continue building governor's homes. Our intention is to continue to put homes into the development that will be increasingly large as they go along, and I do have just a couple of very quick illustrations for you. This is, this is a home that we are actually working on a version of this same house plan for lot six with some clients further up in the development, and we also are working on putting in a show home ourselves on lot eleven using this same basic plan. Both homes will look considerably different, but, but just to give you some idea, we also have plans ahead for a spec home that you can see is, again, considerably larger, will look very different, all on four basements, and then a third example of another spec home that we are currently planning. These will be on lots, trying to remember the numbers, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, the two last spec homes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. I have no additional speaker request forms on any items eighty-one through ninety-four. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak to any of the items eighty-one through ninety-four inclusive? If not, keep in mind, we do keep the public meeting open during this period. So we're on to the continued public hearing consent items, items eighty-one through eighty-six, eighty-one through eighty-six. Bob, do we need to remove any of those from the consent calendar? I'm sorry? And eighty-six has already been removed. Thank you for reminding of that. So what we're actually dealing with is eighty-one through eighty-six exclusive of eighty-six. Want to make sure we get that right. Okay. Seeing no further lights, chair will look for a motion to approve the continued public hearing consent calendar, items eighty-one through eighty-six, actually excluding item number eighty-six. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Chair will look for a motion to close the public hearing, items eighty-one through ninety-four inclusive. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. We are on to the non-consent public hearing items. These are items eighty-seven through ninety-four, eighty-seven through ninety-four inclusive. Chair, let's see. So we need to go item number eighty-seven. Yep, if you'd read that in, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number eighty-seven, Appeal of Planning Commission's Decision on Request by Britton Engineering and Land Surveying for Land and Marine Development, Inc., to Consider an Application for Major Amendment to a Planned Residential Development, more generally described as being located at southwest corner of the intersection of Bunker Drive and Springsteen Lane, continued from March two thousand and ten. And there's really no recommendation here, I'd, I'm not sure how we've moved forward on this one.
Yep. The motion from the, or the recommendation from the planning commission was a recommendation to deny.
Okay. Can someone explain?
Sure. Let's go to Bob. Can you explain the motion from?
Yes. Actually, staff recommended approval of this, but the planning commission, in looking at the type of house, the governor's house, and listening to, there was a resident up there that was against it, and he spoke against it, and the planning commission voted for denial, and that's what Mrs. Harrison is appealing.
What I would suggest is, if you're not comfortable, I yield to the floor and then have someone.
I'd move approval. If I move approval, that would overturn the planning commission's decision.
Yes.
That, that would be my motion, move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval, and what the approval is, is to overturn the recommendation of the planning commission. Everyone clear on that motion? Okay, let's go to Alderman, Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd asked this, we continued two weeks ago, to give me a chance to talk to some of the residents out there, and I did, did so on Saturday, and I did talk to Mike on Sunday night, which is the developer, I don't remember your names, but to give you a result, and I, this is the same thing I told Mike, I, I talked to the one hand landlord, Andrew Presley, with his concerns, and I'm going to follow up on some other of his concerns that he had. I think it was Laura O'Halloran, from on the very top, was very supportive of this going on. Of course, as, as she just described, as you go higher up on the lots, that's how she was explained. The, the rest of the three residents that I talked to, and, and like, as she said, there are other governor homes in this development. In fact, one was required to put on a covered porch, and that property owner was a little concerned that across the street, the other governor home didn't have one put on it yet, which was, it adds to the development, makes it fit in a little bit more. My first opposed to this was not so much that it was a governor's home, the planning commission recommended denial, because the way it's laid out on the lot also. If you look at the way the lot is set up, Bob, if you could, you got it. When I actually showed the residents, there wasn't really much of a proposal of the governor home, but when they seen which way the house was going to sit and seen the driveway, then they had second thoughts. They thought, you know, it's, it's not consistent with the rest of the development on bunker. When, when you look at that corner lot, you have the garage facing north, and it's essing, and there is one other property up in, in the development that is like that. And then you have, if you look at the next picture of what you're going to see driving down bunker, the front porch, you know, you have the one garage door, you got, you hit one more back, Bob. There you go. That's what you're going to see when you drive down bunker. And if, if that had a covered porch on it, like the other governor home that's like that, I think it would probably fit, but you still get it into the driveway essing. You know, we, we've got three properties out in that development that are like that. One's on Matty Ann Court with a goofy driveway that's like that, another one that's just straight up the, the street. And, and that's my concern on it, and I think once some of those other property owners seen that, that drew concern to them, too. Not one was opposed to a governor home. Not one. You know, that I talked, in fact, one of them I talked to was living in one, and that's the one that had the, the covered porch. It's just a matter, the one, one, one resident that was opposed to it, he thought his property values were going down, and he just didn't feel like he was informed what was going on, because he felt one house was brought in that didn't have the cover porch to add to the architectural of the development. And so in, in my view, and from my visiting with the, the neighbors in that neighborhood and adjoining one right next to it, talking to them, I'd have to support the planning commission's recommendations of denial. And I think, you know, I listened to Mike about the lot sizes, how tough they are to work with, but I think you're, you're taking a house and trying to fit it into the lot, and what you should be doing is trying to build a house that fits that lot. I mean, for the driveway and, and for the aesthetics for the rest of the development, that's my personal opinion, because you got a governor home just like this, no, a block down that fits in there fine, the garage, driveway's perfect, but I understand you're dealing with some problems with, with right of ways and so forth. So my substitute motion would be, be for denial, uphold, uphold the planning commission's recommendation for denial.
Okay. We have a substitute motion for denial. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of second? Any further discussion on the motion for approval? The motion is for approval of the appeal. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with one no from Alderman LaCroy. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Item number eighty-eight, please. Fiona, drive safely.
Item number eighty-eight, second reading ordinance fifty-five eighty-seven, an ordinance amending section seventeen oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning within described property as requested by City of Rapid City for rezoning from no-use district to general commercial located adjacent to Elkvale Road between School Drive and Lancer Drive. Motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, item number eighty-eight, second reading of ordinance number fifty-five eighty-seven. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number eighty-nine.
Item number eighty-nine, second reading ordinance fifty-five eighty-nine, an ordinance amending section seventeen oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the City of Rapid City for a rezoning from no-use district to public district located at thirty thirty Orchard Lane. Motion for approval.
We have a motion, second for approval, item number eighty-nine, which is second reading of ordinance number fifty-five eighty-nine. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number ninety, please.
Item number ninety, second reading ordinance fifty-five ninety, an ordinance amending section seventeen oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by City of Rapid City for rezoning from no-use district to mobile home residential district located at twenty-eight eleven Cactus Drive. Motion for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, and it's the second reading of ordinance number fifty-five ninety. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Item number ninety-one, please.
Item number ninety-one, a request by City of Rapid City for Mark Olson and Leonard Novak for the Black Hills Farmers Market for a special exception to the flood area construction regulations located at fifteen twenty West Omaha Street. Motion is for approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number ninety-two, please.
Item number ninety-two, a request by City of Rapid City for a special exception to the flood area construction regulations located at fifteen twenty West Omaha Street. Motion is approved with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations, item number ninety-two. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number ninety-three, please.
Item number ninety-three, authorize mayor and finance officer to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for installation of sewer along Disc Drive as they butt slots one and two, block one east of Mall Business Center subdivision located east of North LaCrosse Street between East Mall Drive and East Disc Drive. Motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. We're dealing with item number ninety-three. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number ninety-four, please.
Item number ninety-four, request by Runner Associates for Robert Acres for variance to subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install water sewer sidewalk and street, streetlight conduit along the access easements to reduce the width of the access easements from fifty-nine feet to thirty-five feet, and to waive the requirement to install sewer along portions of Disc Drive as per chapter sixteen point one six of the Rapid City Municipal Code, located east of North LaCrosse Street between East Mall Drive and East Disc Drive. Motion is for approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations, item number ninety-four. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Mr. Preston, the bill list.
Thank you, Mayor. The bill list totaled six million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. There are no changes or additions.
Motion, please. Do we have, we have a motion and a second to approve the bill list as published for a grand total of six million, one hundred and sixty thousand, I'm sorry, six million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Mr. Green, executive session?
Yes, and it would be for the purposes permitted by S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into executive session for purposes permitted by S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. An executive session. Thank you, everyone. Can you come out of executive session? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.